Good morning, afternoon, ladies. Welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is a special meeting for a budget workshop. It is one thirty PM and all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order. Mr. Roberts, will you deliver the invocation briefs? If you want to please rise.
Reverend Gracian and Father, thank you for all the many blessings you have given us. Watch over and guide us and direct us as we go about the business of this court. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen. And now the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Item number three is a budget workshop to discuss the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Budget proposals submitted with additional salary or operational expenditure requests by the following offices and departments. The first item is a follow-up with the offices and departments from our previous workshop. I believe that was on July seventh. First department there is going to be the AgriLife Extension Agent. How are you, Ms. Goodman? I understand Katie has only gone to a conference, is that right?
Yes, she actually just texted me and she won a communication award first place for publications.
Well, that's great.
A second place newsletter and second place for magazines.
Awesome, great, congratulations. The request from the AgriLife Extension Agent was for an additional part-time or full-time assistant and change of title for the current assistant if the request for the additional assistant was granted. There were also a couple of requests there for some operational expenditure increases. I think office supplies and their training and our travel and training line item. Is there any member of the court that has any comments or has a recommendation? Or if y'all would like to hear my recommendation, I'd be glad to present that. My recommendation is to not approve the full-time or part-time assistant this year and to recommend that y'all go before the Salary Study Committee. We have a committee that's going to be appointed here hopefully at the next regular meeting of Commissioners Court. Commissioner Cooper will chair that committee and to bring that request before that committee and see what the recommendation is from them on that next year. And then there, I did include in the proposed budget that I've been working on some increase for the office supplies. I think if I'm not mistaken, I don't have it in front of me, but currently y'all are at nine hundred dollars for office supplies and y'all requested to increase that to two thousand. And I was, I recommend that we increase that, bless you, to fifteen hundred and see how that goes for next year. Of course, at any time that that's not enough, you can always come to the court. Or actually, on a small amount, you can come to the auditor and I and we can, we can, you know, consider that as the, as needed. And then the same thing on the travel and training. I think y'all requested two thousand there and I was going to meet y'all in the middle on that one at a thousand dollars extra. Again, during the budget year, if y'all see that there's a need for more, we can always address that during the budget. But that's my recommendation. I'm open to hearing anything that the rest of the court would have to say.
I would go along with the recommendation of the budget officer.
Me too. All right, thank y'all. We'll move on to the constables offices, precincts one through six, requesting a salary increase and as well as a certificate pay. And to assist with offsetting the salary increase, there was a request to decrease the vehicle allowance. Any comments on that?
I would, I would just like to know, we brought up the vehicles in the last meeting and if we're going to decrease it, how's that going to help meet your needs?
And what I would say, I think what you're saying is, is that y'all had put in a request to decrease the vehicle allowance from ten thousand a year down to around thirty-eight hundred, but then the worksheet that was given to us said that y'all spending more than ten thousand a year.
Right.
Is that what you mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just for the public.
Sure, sure. So the thought process was that it's a, it's allotted as a vehicle allowance, but we pay full taxes out of it, but we get no retirement benefit from it. So we were trying to, it wouldn't change the amount of money we got. It would, it would just give us a little bit more benefit on the, on the far end. That's, that's what that was about, moving money from one line to another line. And on, on, on that, I, I called the judge, I don't know, a day or two later because, and this is, this is for my office only. I want to make that clear, I'm not speaking for anybody else. It was brought up, well, what about a county vehicle? Okay, that was, that was brought up and, and I don't think the other offices, I'm not sure about, uh, Brothers and Ross, they're both at, they're training right now. But my thought is I would be more than happy to go that route myself. And even if it was, I was the only one that did it and we said, hey, let's, let's do this as a trial. Let's see if this is the right thing to do or not. But I'm not speaking for them on this. They have their own reasons to want to go another route or not. But if that's an opportunity, I'm more than happy to try that. Because I feel like, well, okay, the court's saying, hey, we're trying to do something, then I'm, then I'm, I'm good with being the guy that tries something. So, anything else?
No, no question, just a comment. I think that brings up a, a good point in all of this because I think Constable Suggs indicated that he was not for that.
Correct.
And the point that brings up is everybody has differences of opinions and looks at things different ways. I mean, and I respect both, so thank you for being honest in that area there. And that's something the court might choose to look at and maybe it's cost, you know, cost effective.
Sure.
We'll see.
I, I can tell you, the conversation that Ben and I had was that for the proposed budget, I didn't think that we should include that. But once we know what our certified figures are, and I'm going to put Shirley on the spot here in just a moment about our no new revenue and the voter approval tax rate, but I don't think we're going to have that until the end of the month, is that right? Don't you all have to wait on some software updates or something?
Yes, sir.
That happens sometime around July the twenty-seventh, right?
Probably Friday.
Will we get our certified numbers from the appraisal district? But you've got to wait on a software upgrade to provide us those figures, is that wrong or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we will not know the no new revenue rate and voter approval rate until right before time to file the proposed budget. But it does give us time between the proposed budget and the final adopted budget to discuss any other requests like this. And what I would say do is, is if we were to provide a vehicle for any constable this year, it would be to just do one. And next year we look at doing another one. And if we got into that, into that scenario, we would just buy one every year and you would get a new vehicle every six years if you went that route to have a county-owned vehicle or county-provided vehicle.
Ken, do you mind getting some numbers from our vendor of what it would take? And maybe get that to the judge and we look at it between the proposed and adopted.
Sure, y'all take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Constable. Anything else?
I don't know, overall, as a court, if we did it for one, I don't think everybody would be in agreement that they would want to do that. And I'm not just speaking of the constable, I'm talking about JP's commissioners, you know? And there might be one commissioner that said, yeah, give us a, give us a county vehicle instead of a car allowance. So, uh, I don't know if the court would want to break down departments like that or just say overall, we're just going to give a car allowance, you know?
Sure.
But anyway, thank you.
Anything, Allen? I have a recommendation here, if y'all would like to hear that.
Yes, sir.
I would recommend that we increase the constable salaries by five percent. And y'all have a worksheet in front of you that I passed over to you a little while ago that has some red writing on it. This is some information from the auditor's office. It talks about constables pay increase analysis. For a three percent increase, it would cost a total of two thousand three fifty-nine sixty-eight per constable's office. To increase to five percent is an additional one thousand seventy-eight twenty-eight. And then I just, the red writing is my notes, that's me multiplying those amounts by six so that we get a total for all six constables offices. And again, my recommendation is to go with a five percent increase for this year and then to recommend to the constables, just as I did with AgriLife, to talk to the Salary Committee once it's appointed and try to maybe work something out, work out something more for next year. Or, or maybe not something more, but at least talk to them about it and go through that process. The total, if we go with five percent for all six constables offices, would be twenty thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents, if my math is correct.
That would be an increase on the fiscal year, correct?
Yes, sir, and that does include all the fringes and everything and leaving their vehicle allowances right where they're at.
So currently, we're at forty-three thousand two hundred eighty-five and we would go to forty-five four eighty-eight seventy-eight.
Four forty-eight.
Four forty-eight seventy-eight.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask this, Judge. Any department, last year we did JP's Secretaries where we give a salary adjustment, adjustment. So if we, if we agree as a court to do this for the constables, when it comes time for analysis on the committee for salaries, will the constables be included in any consideration?
I think it'd be up to the committee and what they recommend to the court. And then, of course, the court will have the option to accept that recommendation or not accept it or what have you. Adjust it, you know, we're going to.
I, I spoke with a const, my constable, Davenport earlier, and he brought this up to me about five percent. Prior to that, that's the first time that I heard, and, and this is not derogatory, my statement's not, that I've heard that we were going to consider that. And we had already had one request from the auditor to increase to five and I was going to oppose that. So if you think that we can, and you usually don't put nothing out there unless you think we can afford it, so.
Well, it's, it's an additional six thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents over what was, what I had planned to put in the proposed budget. And I, I think we can, I think we can do that. Constable Davenport knew that because I put an email out to all of them last Friday that that would be my recommendation today. Of course, I didn't think I could send that out to all of you without violating the Commissions Act, so that's why I didn't.
And so that would take.
And that doesn't mean that's what's going to happen, that's just my recommendation.
And so that would take them from the forty-three to forty-six?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, four forty-eight, seventy-eight. At three percent, which is what is being proposed prior to today, is forty-four thousand five eighty-two ninety-eight for each constable. If there's a consensus of the court to go over that by two percent, which would be five percent, it would be forty-five, four forty-eight, seventy-eight per constable, plus fringes.
Plus fringes, not including.
Right. The fringes would be twenty-three thousand seven eighteen thirty-two per constable. And that's if they're on the health insurance and all that kind of stuff. I don't know if all of them are. If they're not, then that, that amount comes out of that. They are all on health insurance, okay.
And that's leaving the auto allowance at eight thirty-three?
Thirty-three. Yes, sir, the annual amount's ten thousand.
The original request, Ben, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, was to increase to a entry-level deputy, correct?
Correct.
Forty-five, four forty-eight, what's the difference in, in that and what you were asking? Or?
Roughly five thousand. I, I want to say, and Chief, you may know Brandon personally, fifty-one over thirty-three something?
I think it's fifty-one over six.
Okay, fifty-one thousand basically.
There's about a fifty-five hundred dollar difference per constable.
I would go with your, with your recommendation, Judge.
Like I said, I don't think you'd throw something out there, you didn't think that we could afford it. But where I stand on this is, if not this year, next year, every department's going to be asking for something because we allow things like this. The auditor's already asking for hurt people a five percent increase. I've always had the stance that if we can't give it to one, let's don't give it to any of them. But I would go along with this as well.
Anything, Mr. Roberts? All right, well, thank y'all. We'll move on to the next item and that will be the county attorney. County attorney was requesting additional salary increases to personnel to be funding, funded using his leftover state supplement. I think we discussed that at the last meeting. He can only make a certain amount of money. But when he adds his county pay to his state pay, it's more than that cap. So he has to return some of that state pay and he can do that through his office or it goes back to the state? Is that correct?
Well, I think it goes back to county, it goes back into my budget. Basically, I have to use it in my office.
Okay.
So it's coming into my office either way, I'm just using it for salary increases instead of using it for office expenditures or things like that.
And the office has done that before in the past, correct?
That is correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
It's already there.
No, it's not, it's not already there, is it?
Well, a certain amount is.
Yeah.
It's, it's not as much because since I took office in January from October to December, since Ms. Walton was still in office, she had to give up a certain different amount than I did. So I only had to, so my number was a lot less than what it will be next year because it will be the full budget year that I would be having to give up. So it's a little extra money than what I gave up this year. But it comes back into our office. The funds from this year comes back into my office already.
And I don't have the figures in front of me that you presented because we looked at it last time, but going off the memory, they all seem to be in line. I mean, it didn't seem to be anything outrageous you were asking for.
I would say ninety-two hundred to be put into salaries and I think I'm going to end up having to give up about ninety-six hundred in the figures we came up with.
But what happens to the other four hundred? Do you end up using that in office supplies or something?
I have to, I have to give it back to my office, I guess.
The state sends a supplement and then the county also gives a salary to him and he's only allowed to, to receive X amount of dollars. And anything in addition to that has to go back to his budget to spend on operating expenses. He can't, he can't collect more than what they, they have set their limit at. And it offsets his county budget. In the past, it's been salaries and supplies.
So could the four hundred dollars extra go to offset the fringes of what we have to pay on the back end?
Um, we're, it does, so the fringes and his, um, his employees, we're responsible for the fringes on him.
So the ninety-two hundred includes the salary and fringes?
Yes.
Okay. Good deal.
Yeah, that's both. I made sure I kept underneath that the money I had to give back. I made sure it was under that amount.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the county clerk requesting some additional operational expenditures. I don't have the amount, but it wasn't a lot and I had, my recommendation was to go ahead and include that. It was some office expenses. I want to say she increased the office expense line item, decreased another and then increased her.
Election, it was election.
That's, yeah, it was a different budget for that. Uh, there was one other line item, do you remember?
One was office supplies?
Yeah.
And then was it printing?
Printing, that's right. Yeah. And I recommend that we include those requests. Any discussion on that? Okay. I got it, if y'all want to look at it, I'm going to pull it up. Office supplies was an increase from, uh, seven thousand to eight thousand. And last year she spent eight thousand seven seventy-three seventy-eight. So I thought that was a justified request. And then on printing, the budgeted amount there is four thousand and the request is for five thousand. I think she told us that she was expecting some additional printing next year for something. I don't remember what it was, but I thought it was justified as well. And then, uh, on miscellaneous, she didn't ask for an increase. Not that I see, anyway.
I concur.
Any other discussion on that? Next is the purchasing department. And Misty, if y'all are not aware, lost her father over the weekend, so she could not be here today. She is requesting an approximately three dollar an hour increase for the purchasing clerk who currently makes somewhere around thirteen dollars, thirteen sixteen, maybe something like that, an hour. And, uh, ask the court to have any comments regarding that before, before we move forward.
According to the last budget, it was fifteen fifteen.
In the purchasing clerk?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was human resources, thirteen fourteen.
But I'm glad you said the fifteen fifteen and human resources. I was comparing her to that position.
That's what I.
And I think if we went that route, fifteen fifteen plus three percent, which is, ends up being fifteen sixty-something, I think that would be a good, uh, then, then, you know, it doesn't provide the, the request is for sixteen an hour. So it doesn't quite get her there, but I think if we compare those two positions, they're similar.
That's what I would say.
Everybody okay with that? So we, now, I just want to make everybody aware that the new human resources clerk is not making fifteen fifteen, she's making fifteen either. So the purchasing clerk will make a little more than the HR clerk, but it's because the new person doesn't have the time. But the purchasing clerk and the human resources clerk that was here did have about the same amount of time I was comparing them.
HR is going to turn around probation period three nights is what I was told. And then three nights, she's going to raise them to make that.
I was not aware of that.
That's what I was saying.
She can, that's what she wants to do.
That's what I was saying.
So they will be the same.
That brings me, uh, the sheriff had brought something up last time about one of his clerks and I, I, after that, I went through and done all that. But I submitted to the judge a list of committee members. Were you served on that committee? I forgot to ask you.
Yeah.
Myself?
No, 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 the sheriff.
Sure.
Thank you.
Nothing like being on the spot, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to get you later, Matt.
I know, I'm, I'm aware.
Oh, we got him already on something else. All right, any other discussion on the purchasing department request? Uh, the next item would be the request from the sheriff for the new dispatcher. That would be one additional dispatcher funded partially by the county and the remainder through an existing cost-sharing program with other entities. If I remember right, the total cost to the county was around twenty-nine thousand for that. The other entities pay the remainder amount of that, of that cost, is that right? Candace? Twenty-nine thousand is, you ever take a few dollars is the amount that the county would pay out of that, is that correct? Sheriff?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on that? I, I recommend that we move forward with that request.
Great.
All right. Last, uh, not the last, second to the last from the last meeting was the tax assessor collector requesting additional operational expenditures. And since then, she has also sent me an email, which I did forward to y'all regarding a request for the trip that she's going to take to Amarillo, is that right? For a conference next year. And that was an additional eleven hundred dollars, I think, is that right? How much? I've got it.
Twelve hundred, twelve hundred.
Yes, ma'am, twelve hundred dollars.
You driving or flying?
I'm not driving.
That's a long drive.
All right, so currently the travel and training is five thousand, that would increase it to sixty-two hundred. And then there was an increase, a request for an increase in the outside services from eighty thousand to eighty-two thousand five hundred. That has to do with elections.
Yes, sir.
If I remember right. And an addition of five hundred dollars in office supplies. And I recommend that we go forward with those, those requests.
I concur.
Anything else you want to say?
Thank you.
But I wouldn't, I didn't mean that, but you're welcome. And then the last department or office actually that we addressed last time was a request from the district clerk to increase one of her personnel on her salary. Miss Hogg, do you want to talk about that?
Well, I, I think I understood that the last time as far as, um, the criminal clerk. And I appreciate that, um, time. I also have, um, been made aware that my chief deputy and the county clerk's chief deputy have been with the same amount of time and have always made the same amount of money. And I'm not sure, um, I think maybe Glenda asked for money last year and.
She took some money left over from somebody leaving and moved it?
Well, it, um, I only bring it up because I know it was brought to my attention and if, you know, if something could be done, I'd appreciate it. But, um, I knew that, you know, as we go along, next year, it would be a greater difference. Um, so I just, I think we've both been here eighteen months.
I've been here, December will be eighteen.
Eighteen years, so I just.
How much is the difference between the two?
Sixty-one cents.
Okay. And what was the request on the criminal clerk that you made? What was the difference there?
Just going to offer, oh, let's see. Yes.
I think it's four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars for wages plus a thousand ninety for fringes for a total of five thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars increase.
Ms. Hogg, if you don't mind, regardless of the action taken today by the court, would you submit me an email on the chief deputies?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments regarding those two requests from the district clerk?
What's the sheriff recommend?
Do you have, um, do you have anywhere in your budget that you could move the extra sixty-one cents on the chief deputy? Like they did in the county clerk's office? If not, my recommendation is to not approve it and to bring that before the, the Salary Committee.
Possibly, I don't have it in sight.
Okay, if you find that, just let me know. Any other comments? Mr. Cooper?
That belonged to chief?
Both positions.
Both.
Yes, sir. Commissioners?
You going to bring that back to us, huh?
I can, I, I mean, I, I'll scrape my budget down as far as I can give it. So it, it would only be, um, it would be stretching something out, but I don't know if it's there.
All right, we'll move on to item B on our current agenda. And that's part of the request by the county auditor. Ms. Corr?
Good afternoon. I'm asking for an additional, well, I'm asking for a five percent raise for my assistant auditors. That's not an addition, it's just a two percent raise over the three percent that we're discussing today. And also to give the assistant auditor, our grant coordinator, an additional three thousand five hundred forty-two dollars per year with fringes, that's an amount of four thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars for the grant coordinator. The total cost for the, the request is seven thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and with fringes, it's eight thousand eight hundred one dollars. And the reason I'm asking for this additional salary increase is due to the increase in the workload from the numerous grants that we have been awarded over the last couple of years. In two thousand seventeen, Hardin County had twenty-three grants. And since then, we have fifty-nine and counting every day. I think we've actually approved two more since we, we come out with that number in Commissioners Court. Our assistant auditors continue to do an outstanding job performing their everyday duties. Over the past four years, these additional responsibilities and new jobs has created a tremendous, um, additional accounting tax because of these grants. We currently collect funds from our adult probation department for financial reporting and our grant coordinator is the one that compiles that report. I talked to Mr. Cummings and he agrees that she does a fantastic job doing those duties and that he, um, said that he, he agrees with the proposal to use those funds towards her additional, um, salary increase. We currently have collected that over the last six years in an amount of over twenty thousand dollars. We've never asked for additional, um, increase in our budget because of that. We've just always put in the miscellaneous revenue in the general fund. And the amount that that averages, three thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars, which is close to what I'm asking for the grant coordinator, but it does not include her fringes. It would be, the fringes would not be included in that amount that Mr. Cummings gives the auditors department every night. We are currently asking other departments if they could, um, put it in their grants to help offset some of the salaries in the auditors department and hopefully that'll be approved in the near future. And I just thank you for your consideration on this.
There's a strong indication that everything you're asking for can be consumed by veterans, correct?
Yes, sir, in the future, not, not just.
Just, just for the one person though, not, not the five percent on everybody.
Well, we're asking for additional, you know, for like, for example, for the health department, we've asked if she could possibly find some, some additional funds in her grants and it's a strong possibility that she's going to be able to do that. I just don't have an answer today. That will help offset the other costs. Their responsibilities and duties have increased. Their responsibilities and duties have increased drastically over the last four years, and that's all I'm just asking, that since their duties and responsibilities have increased, I feel like their compensation should too.
Do the other three assistant auditors also work on grants?
Yes, because there's such a workload in our department now, I have I I have had to give some of the smaller grants to other personnel in my department. And also um Candace works very closely with Amanda, and she does some year end, and she's actually took over some grants as well.
And they're both really, really good at what they do.
Thank you very much, I think so as well.
If um if the, I know that Ms. Whitby has submitted a budget on the grant that we just approved last Tuesday to the state that hasn't been approved yet, I talked to her late Friday. And she did include an amount in that budget to uh help offset some financial administration in the auditor's office. And also for them to hire somebody that would help um at least get the paperwork submitted to y'all timely and properly and accurately, maybe that would help cut down on some of the workload in there, but. The main thing I wanna say, she's included an amount in that budget, and if it's approved, I guess the question I have is how many other people in the office besides uh the one that you're at, the grant coordinator handles health department grants, is there anybody else?
Candace um has helped with some of Regina's, the Health Inspector's grants, she's been very, very good at working with Regina and getting some of her grants um in order.
Anything that's uh paid for by a grant, uh you can tell by my previous uh votes, I don't have a problem with whatsoever if the county's not out any money, so if you think that the grads can pay for this, I'll be for it. And just like I said in the last meeting, I don't blame any department head or elected official coming in here asking for increases in their personnel's uh salaries because. You talking about the workload, the workload increased tremendously in the sheriff's office as far as calls for service and everything, so that's something we're gonna have to, you know, face in the future as well, it's not just one department, but. Uh if if yours is, I think yours can be covered by a grant, I don't have a problem with the increase.
Thank y'all. Anything else, Ms. Gore?
No, thank you very much.
Next is Adam C., the district attorney. I think I forwarded an email to y'all from Mrs. Walton, where she's in a sentencing today in the district court, in the three fifty-six district court. Do y'all want to discuss her proposal without her, or do y'all wanna meet again when she's available? She says she's available anytime tomorrow, pretty pretty much anytime tomorrow.
Is there an overall increase?
She's requesting a supplement. I think we discussed that briefly last time, and uh that amount, from what I understand, is thirteen thousand. And the way that that's uh calculated is the uh, and y'all got a copy of the statute that Mrs. Walton sent to us. Basically, it's either all or nothing. We either pay her the full amount of the highest paid district judge or zero. She's requesting that we pay her an amount, so we have to pay her the highest amount of any district judge. Now, they're paid uh eighteen thousand by the county, but five thousand of that is a juvenile board supplement, so she would not be entitled to that, I don't believe, is that correct? She would be entitled to the thirteen thousand. And then the other request that she has is for one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars for uh wireless phones, which have already been purchased. They were purchased in this budget year. It was offset by another expense, but now she's asking to add that line item for next year. So I would just ask the court. If you wanna consider that today without her, or do you want to reschedule and come back when she's available to discuss?
What other expenses do we have to add other than the supplement?
The uh wireless phone, nineteen fifty-two. Excuse me? How much? How much? Two thousand five hundred and fifty?
And is she using any of the uh pre-trial diversion money?
That that is another request that she has made is to uh to add a pre-trial diversion budget. I failed to include that, so I apologize, but um.
Could that help offset?
I don't know, I don't think so.
And would the phone be for her?
If they had, uh I believe the phones are for the district attorney and the three assistants.
And what are we doing?
Is there four of them?
I think so, but.
If one of those assistants handled the pre-trial diversion, that one, that person's could probably be paid out of the pre-trial diversion program, I think.
Will we currently give them a stipend?
I'm looking at Mr. Minnick, and he's not acting like that we can't pay that. So anyway, two thousand five hundred and fifty for wireless phone would be an expense that we don't, I don't know if it could be offset in any way.
Angela, do they have any uh stipends or anything currently right now that we pay? I know some we're paying like fifty dollars a month.
No. Not in their department. Cell phone allowance?
There must not be four of them. How many are there? Cell phones? If there were four, they'd be about forty-eight hundred a year, so it must just be two. Y'all want to come back tomorrow and ask her to meet with us?
Tomorrow, I've got to take Jerry to the doctor. Did the previous uh DA, did he take the stipend?
The supplement?
The supplement. Do we know of any in the past have taken the supplement?
I don't know that, I don't know that answer.
Is there another day we can meet and ask her?
Sure.
Other day we can meet and ask her.
I can ask her. When we get through this meeting, we can just recess instead of a journey?
See if she's through and then upstairs.
See if she's through, and if not, we can uh.
Think that would be the thing to do. I think we need to ask her. There's some voids in the, voids in there.
Angela, do you know who, how many personnel we're paying stipends to on a cell phone?
She's available tomorrow or next. That was the reply I got around uh tw- at twelve thirteen. So tomorrow's not good, we can meet without her.
Judge, if y'all wanna meet without me, that's fine, or I can tune in. And actually, I can do after lunch. I just got a driver too in front of the procedure.
Wednesday's extra day for me anyway. I can do Wednesday morning at uh ten o'clock. Y'all wanna do that? Alright, next is Adam D., the emergency management office, it's the disaster recovery director. Ms. Burr?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing good.
So I didn't know the protocol for requesting a salary increase in the county, so I um. You know, formed a written request to my boss, and it's my understanding that he sent it to all of you, and I don't wanna go back through all that and, you know, repeat what is in that, but I do wanna reiterate. That my uh main job, disaster recovery, is a really big job, and it's getting bigger. So much so that the Texas Department of Emergency Management created a division just to support counties like us impacted by disaster, our county leadership and disaster recovery leaders like myself. We are Harden and Orange County are the models for long-term recovery in the state of Texas. In that um Tito likes to see disaster recovery, they wanna see every disaster recovery um model set up in other counties across the state like we have here. They wanna see us in the EOCs because they believe that's important, and I do too. On the uh disaster recovery side of my job, I continue to serve households impacted by the disasters since Harvey. And this will continue for a lot of reasons. Number one, we'll we'll keep getting impacted by storms, I don't want that to happen, but it will. And two, sometimes it takes households, you know, we we serve every household impacted by disaster in the county, but our focus is on the most vulnerable. And sometimes it takes those families longer to get to us. So for instance, even though we're four years out from Harvey, I continue to get calls from people impacted by Harvey and say, you know, my house was impacted by Harvey, I didn't know you guys uh were there, can I get assistance? So when that happens, we start from scratch. Well, after Har- you know, the state, during Harvey recovery, the state provided us with disaster case managers. And those, that contract ended, so we don't have that anymore. So in addition to uh my normal responsi- responsibilities with disaster recovery, I also have assumed the disaster case manager role. So when these families call me for assistance, you know, I I have to vet them, I have to make sure they fall into our guidelines, and then I have to um handle the disaster recovery side. Just this week, we had two winter storm projects going on, one we're wrapping up and one we're just starting, it's a pretty big job out in Votaw. So I just wanna reiterate to the court that disaster recovery does continue, even though, you know, we're outside of Harvey. Also, part of my job as disaster recovery director is to find right grants, you know, find grant opportunities so that we're prepared, God forbid if a storm does come, that we can quickly serve vulnerable households and we have that funding available. Also, to learn from previous storms, to make sure that we're prepared, that we do things better, that we can serve people quicker than we did before. And just in twenty twenty-one, we've been able to do that in two really big ways. The first way, I don't know if y'all are aware of this, is our Harden County Strong app. Which we haven't launched yet, but it's getting very close to launching. And uh I actually designed this app, I'm technology challenged, but I think that may be a good thing because it's really user-friendly, it's really easy to operate. And this app i- is gonna provide a lot of uh good resources for our county. For instance, Judge McDaniel, if we have a storm looming in the Gulf, and he decides he's gonna issue a mandatory evacuation for low-lying areas, just for example. We can push that notification out through this app, so everybody that's downloaded it, that that notification is gonna go directly into their hand. We don't have to wonder, are they seeing it on social media, are they watching the news, you know, that they know, because they're gonna get it if they've downloaded this app. This was eighty-five hundred dollars, the county will utilize it, Judge McDaniel will utilize it, Aaron will utilize it, and it cost the county nothing, I wrote a grant to get it. Another thing is um our new door hangers. You know, after Harvey, uh Judge McDaniel especially would always say, Michelle, are are we reaching everybody? Well, I didn't know. So we learned moving forward, and just uh in the last couple of months, I designed this door hanger. And on the front of it, it's got a QR code. So every, when you hold your, you know, cellphone up to it, that QR code takes the user directly to the Harden County Strong online application for assistance. Also, this door hanger, front and back, has got all of our information about Harden County Strong. So we don't have to wonder if people know who we are. We get a team of volunteers, they go into impacted areas, they hang these door hangers on everybody's house, and we're no longer asking families to come to us. Especially the most vulnerable, who may not have access to transportation or may not have a driver's license, we deal with a lot of families like that, it's right there for them. And they've got my phone there, but they don't have a cell phone, you know, to to utilize that QR code, they can call me. So all of these things are just part of recovery that continue, not just in serving the families that we serve, but also helping us to become better. So um at the end of last year, when we found out that Commissioner Young would be Commissioner Young, her public assistant grant responsibilities were passed down to me. And it's a really big job. Um it came with a lot of challenges, mainly a huge learning curve, and it was a little intimidating, but I just made up my mind that I was gonna do it to the best of my ability. Learn as much as I could and have a good attitude about it, and I have done that. And um I I have seen where, and actually, there's parts of it, a lot of parts of it that I do enjoy. And I think I've come far enough around in that process to see that there is a benefit to me being involved in these grants. An example is on our um acquisition and buyout grant. Families that got on that grant, that happened very early on, so they were directly impacted by the storm. However, because they got on a buyout grant and decided, we don't wanna rebuild, we don't wanna recover, we're gonna get on this buyout, and we're gonna move on, they weren't necessarily on my radar. So through this grant opportunity, I have been able to connect with these people, and now that this, one of our acquisitions grants is kind of coming to fruition. One particular family, I'm just using them as an example, they've been in an RV since Harvey. So they never replaced anything because they didn't have a place to store anything. So through Harden County Strong, I was able to provide them with replacement furniture. If I were not involved in these grants, I would not have known, they wouldn't have been on my radar, and that would have been another barrier or a struggle for them. So, you know, for that, I really appreciate it. Um I made these notes so I wouldn't get off topic. So in addition to my regular disaster recovery role, I'm now involved in overseeing twenty million dollars in federal funds, six important state grant award contracts, and these numbers will increase every year. You know, because these grants come out of storms, and as we have more storms, there will be more grant opportunities. So it's not like this is a a short-term thing or a temporary thing. I mean, this is a long-term responsibility that's been added, you know, to my day-to-day work. I'm working with highly highly complex state agencies, and I I do wanna add the frustrating bureaucracies that go with that. And a lot of my time with these grants so far has been spent dealing with those bureaucracies, you know, incompetence at some of these agencies, a high turnover rate. So you'll form a relationship with one person at a state agency, and then, you know, a month or two down the road, they're gone, and then you have to start that relationship all over again. And what that means is more time for me, but even worse, delayed for the people that we're serving. So there's just a lot involved in these grants. Outside of recovery, the duties with public assistance grants are important, and they're not going away, which I just said. So I said all that to say this. I realize that I'm asking for a significant salary increase, and I want you to know that I am not here asking for this because it's something that I feel like I deserve. Or that, you know, I feel like I'm special, or that you should feel like I'm special, that's not what this is. I'm just asking for a salary increase to be compensated for this job, this new job that I'm doing that's been added to, you know, my my daily stuff. And I just kinda came up with that number, um roughly documenting the amount of hours that I'm spending doing these grants every week. And it's more than a third, but I just used a third, a a a week before last, it was like ten hours that week, but last week it was nineteen hours. We have a call every day, a mandatory call that can last an hour, and I'm not the only one on that call, Misty's on it, Amanda Hollins on it, I mean, we're a team. But but it is a big job, and it it's it's significant, I mean, it really is significant. And that's why I'm asking for the increased raise. And in closing, I also wanna say that it does not escape me the privilege that comes with working for Harden County, and I love working here. The privileges that have come with me being appointed to this job, and I appreciate Judge McDaniel very much for trusting me to do disaster recovery. It has brought me great, great joy. And I I come here, you know, humbly and respectfully, and I hope that I've come across that way, um you know, 'cause I I want it to be that way, I want it to be a win-win, and I think I put that in my request to Judge McDaniel. I don't have a budget, so I try to be a very low-maintenance employee. I don't ask for things, I buy my own supplies, there's equipment that I need to do my job, I don't ask the county to provide me with that. If I don't purchase it, then I'll use it, uh funds that I, you know, I sometimes I can write capacity grants through Harden County Strong. You know, I've been able to buy a paper shredder, a paper cutter, a laptop, a a nice adding machine, I all things that I have to do to do my job. So I know that when I ask the county for things, you know, for supplies, that comes out of Aaron's budget, so I'm very mindful for of that, I don't I don't do that, I try to be as low maintenance. And give Judge McDaniel, you know, the least amount of worry and trouble. So I just want you to know, the reason I'm asking is because these grants are extremely significant.
Thank you. I just wanna say, what I said last week when you weren't here, that everything you put in the letter was true, and everything you just said here today is true, you do all of that, there's no no doubt. Way more than probably I even know, so I just wanna add that and tell you how much we appreciate the job that you do.
Thank you, Judge McDaniel.
Any other questions or comments from the court?
Uh are are you on, are is your salary on a grant? Is that, are you paid by grant?
I I really don't know.
She's not. There's uh, Erin had requested uh grant funds from the uh emergency management planning grant, EMPG, and uh that's two years ago, that was turned down. I think some of her expenses were paid through a FEMA grant when she first started, but that's gone now, it was through our uh our regular TW process. And uh then she was supposed to have been eligible for what they call PAPDAC money, and about uh, I don't know, thirteen months into her employment here, we'd learned from FEMA that wasn't, you know how it is with FEMA, they tell you one thing. And you get to the ninth person in in row who you're dealing with, and they change that, and that happened here as well. So no, she's paid through that uh amount that's in the Commissioner's Court budget uh to offset the EMPG grant, that's where her salary comes from.
Is that why it says match?
Yeah, that's why I was wondering the match. No, no salary, Texas doesn't pay any permission money or anything like that.
I know that I turned my timesheets into uh Aaron, but I didn't know that if I was on part of the the grant, the grant that pays his salary, I I wasn't sure.
You're asking a question out of the wages pages, what does it say?
Uh, Disaster Recovery Director dash match.
Candace can probably answer that.
We don't, from the emergency management grant, we don't get enough from that grant in order to cover hers and Erin's and the expenses that go into that department.
I think last year we got thirty-eight thousand, is that right?
It, it's been running about thirty-eight thousand.
When I first came here, we were getting around fifty. It goes down each year just about.
And I will say too, Commissioner Roberts, speaking to your question, before, uh, Harvey, there were organizations that would fund disaster, like Long-Term Recovery Group, it wasn't called Disaster Recovery, it's called LTRG, Executive Directors. But they have gotten away from that because our model for recovery is what the state wants to see. They want to see the disaster recovery leader of the county on the county payroll, you know, working in the EOC, working with emergency management. So those grants that used to be out there are much fewer and far between, and probably serve smaller counties that, you know, don't have the funding to put that, their people in with, um, on their county budget.
Another unfunded mandate.
I understand that, but, but the reason I ask was I, I wasn't sure, and I just want, I, I wasn't quite sure if you were getting paid through, you know, like the regional planning commissioner or somebody like that along, along beside us, so...
Can you think further?
And I know this has been done before, you know, with other departments has, that we're given extra responsibilities, like when Erin took on IT, so, you know, I just decided I, I'd try.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next is the Justice of the Peace Precinct Two, Judge Brewer.
I'm sorry to get heard about my speech, right? I'm just here basically to get an increase in my, uh, utility line item. I'm, uh, the past few years, I've been going over a few hundred dollars, and I guess it's because of the, uh, maybe the increase in utilities I know might at home is going up, and, uh...
Big rates are raised.
Yeah, and at the garbage, uh, rate in, uh, two in the last three years. So, uh, right now, it's currently at thirty-two hundred, and, uh, I think this year I projected to go over probably, over, a little over five hundred of my budget. So I figured that I needed to add about five hundred, and I talked to Candace, and I think she said maybe a thousand. So I'm gonna go with your number.
She went rolling away.
Well, irregardless, it's, we gotta pay it, and I, I hate to go over every year. I'd like to stay within my budget, but, so...
On this, uh, worksheet, Judge, the only difference, uh, I guess is that a thousand dollars from thirty-two hundred to forty-two hundred, is that correct, Candace? I don't have a problem with that.
No, I agree.
And you're all just looking good from the outside.
Yeah. Come in and sleep inside, it's not too far off.
Looking good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge. With the exception of the district attorney, that should take care of everyone unless there's somebody I'm not thinking about. What's that? I've got, it's already in the, uh, Commissioner's Court budget. There's a, uh, line item in the Commissioner's Court budget for grant matches, and I put an amount in there, I put a hundred thousand in there for that. Let me go back and make sure. And grant administrative expenses. I put a hundred thousand in there for that, for, for next year, so we have a line item to be able to pay those grants out of, but we have to wait for reimbursement. But thank you. Is there any other department that has any requests? Any other comments or questions or concerns by the court or any elected official? Yes, ma'am? Five telephones? And the amount's twenty-five fifty?
Uh, it's, it's about two hundred and twelve dollars a month.
Okay.
For all five selected? So the request is coming through for this next budget, how many are new?
All of them, because the DA didn't have any cell phones.
No, not their investigator?
The county attorney's office has cell phones, but the district attorney's office did not, when she moved up there. I'm assuming that's when she bought the cell phones. And like I said, it's covered in this budget, but, uh, it needs to be added as a line item for next budget.
So it would be her, uh, associate attorneys and investigators?
I don't know.
Possibly her, maybe.
It's her and three assistants, is that right? So that would only be four. I don't know where the fifth one comes from. But we can ask her Wednesday at ten. Unless y'all wanna do something different.
You wanna recess right now and check with her?
That's, well, I can, I text her and she hasn't replied, so I'm just gonna, she's on it. Or we can recess and come back fifteen, twenty minutes if she replies then. You don't wanna do that?
Oh, that's up to y'all.
Yeah, it's up to you, yeah.
I'm good, I've got time.
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna wanna recess and see if I can get ahold of her?
Sounds good.
Let's do that. Court's in recess until we come back.